Call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council a order. We will start with an invocation by Councilman McDaniel, and after that, I'm gonna throw a curveball. I'd like our young Marines that are here to lead us in the pledge after the invocation. Okay? So, uh, please stand with me.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, bless this family and those that are in attendance tonight. Help us promote the well-being for our city, the city of Cartersville. Thanks for the beautiful weather. Bless those that are unfortunate, the sick, the homeless. May we all travel back to our destination safe and sound tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
And young Marines, if you'll step forward to the microphone and lead us in the pledge, please. I'm gonna assume you know it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Ms. Killen, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our September 15th meeting. Councils have these well in advance tonight. Chair will entertain any additions, corrections, or otherwise any type of motion that might be made.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, I'm gonna ask the young Marines to step forward again if you would, please, ladies. This, uh, this week is Red Ribbon Week, National Red Ribbon Week. It's Red Ribbon Week, it's part of the National Red Ribbon Campaign. Uh, for our clerk, will you please state your names and your addresses for the record?
I am January PFC McKenna Brooks.
I am January PFC Allman.
Wait, I don't think we need the addresses. Are we good?
Please do.
Thank you. Well, I have here a proclamation that, uh, that you Marines have ordered me to make. I'm happy to do, and I'm gonna read it here, then I'm gonna present it to you. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Gosh, I don't get served at home. That's why. It says here that whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation have reached epidemic proportions, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified preventative educational efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle which includes no use of illegal drugs and no illegal use of drug, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas businesses, governments, parents, and youth, law enforcement, media outlets, medical and religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, and service organizations will demonstrate their commitment to a healthy drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the community of Cartersville, along with the others across the nation, further commits its support to ensure the success of this important campaign, now therefore is the Mayor of the City of Cartersville, I, Matthew J. Santini, to hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2011 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention activities and education during this week as well as throughout the year to make a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Thank you, ladies. I'm gonna come down and give this to you in a minute, but you've got that microphone. If people want a red ribbon, how do they get one?
Well, they can either make one, or they can call in, go find the DEA. And call in, go find the DEA, the DEA will see if they would like to, or however the DEA knows theirs. And if they make it, they just make it like a regular ribbon, put a pin in it, or however you would like to do it, just wear it, drop it, red.
Very good. I'll put y'all through the rig already now, I'm gonna give this to you. Turn around right here. Stay right there, and we'll hold this right here. Okay? Thank you very much. You've done your hard work. All right, everybody here saw that I was called sir, right? Move on to the next item. Next item is, uh, second reading, it's SU 11-02, Mr. Manino.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Councilors, you noted this is a second reading. At a public hearing last, uh, at the last council meeting, I went over the specifics of this particular request, uh, at 119 South Avenue. Since the last reading, uh, the applicant has presented staff with, uh, two conditions that they would like to add to their application. Uh, that information has been distributed to you, Council, along with some other information that was provided. Uh, those two conditions that the staff, uh, that was presented to us, uh, I'll read those, they are as follows. Number one, the special use permit will be personal to the Hawkins and not run with property such that any future owner of 119 South Avenue will have to reapply for a permit. And condition number two, any hired events at 119 South Avenue will end by 10:00 PM with cleanup end by 11:00 PM. Hired events shall refer to events where the property is being rented for use. Again, that was presented by the applicant to go into the current application for the request for a special use permit. No other changes since the first reading.
Okay. And question, are those so stipulated, or does it need to be added in the motion? It's a motion we're gonna read it.
If, if y'all chose to, um, grant the application, that would need to be added to the application or made part of the application.
Made part of the motion?
Yes. With those conditions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Okay. Thank you, Randy. I'm gonna open up a public hearing, uh, for case SU 11-02. As we did last time, uh, our city attorney's gonna keep track of the time. We're gonna allot 10 minutes for, uh, each side of the issue. I'll ask you once again to, uh, continue to plow new ground and, uh, make sure that we're not stating the same thing that we stated in the first meeting. I mean, you know, to some extent, we don't need everybody saying, if everybody gets up and says the same thing, we're not gonna be covering any new territory, okay? My goal is to give as many people an opportunity to speak as possible, uh, and so that, anybody wishing to step forward and speak, may do so at this time.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, Peter Olson, 15 South Oakwood Square. All I wanted to emphasize was what, uh, Mr. Manino already pointed out. I mean, we, we did attempt in the last few weeks to meet with the opponents, and they didn't accept any of our invitations. I mean, we had some timing issues, I guess. Um, but, you know, in listening to what people complained about at the last hearing, we wanted to try and proactively address those. And one is the concern that this has become a special use permit forever. And we like the Hawkins, all right, but we don't know what the future holds. So, we'll, we stipulated the permit would just be for them, and the next owner would have to come back. And then second, you know, there was some discussion about parties in the night or whatever. I mean, they vindicated, they don't intend, it's their home, they don't tend to use it that way, but they, they offered a very reasonable, you know, end time of 10 o'clock with just enough to clean it up. Things would shut down in terms of the event at 10:00. So, we hope that addresses, you know, the majority of the concerns. For the folks who just say, "We don't want it in this, we don't want this kind of use here," I mean, all we can say is, "Y'all put it in the district as a special use. If you meet the criteria in the district, which I think we've met, and going beyond what the city put in, is, should be met to have this kind of use in the district." So, we're gonna say, you know, it's, it's not, it's permitted in the district provided y'all approve it. Not asking for rezoning to commercial. Um, it's nothing that the city didn't contemplate doing at the appropriate size. I don't think there's hardly a better size for this. That's all I wanted to say. If anybody has any questions, please reserve any of your time. Mrs. Hawkins, one of the main sayors.
Before that, any questions for Mr. Olson? Okay, thank you, sir.
Audrey Hawkins, 119 South Avenue. Good evening. I just need a couple of minutes of your time, if I may. I said before that there were 15 people that abut our property and two object, one of which we have acquired a misunderstanding with, and I won't go into that, and I won't tell you who it is. There are 33 homes on South Avenue. There are three addresses on South Avenue on the petition that objects to what we're trying to do. And this is something I took from your website. This is the Old Town District. There are 118 homes in it. There are 17 addresses in the Old Town District on the petition. That means 101 families quietly declined to sign. They've been around three times, put flyers on all the mailboxes so everybody knew, and 101 families have declined to sign. I've tried to communicate my thoughts and our intentions to each one of you at different times and different methods, and I appreciate, we appreciate your time and energy more than that.
Thank you for coming, sir. All right, once again, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak, either for or against, may do so at this time. When doing so, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Uh, good evening. My name is Maureen Kirkland. I reside at 4 Neal Street. My property adjoins the Hawkins backyard. Um, I wanna mention real quick, Allison Dillon was instrumental in, in putting a lot of this together, um, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of Old Town Neighborhood. Um, I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for the opportunity to voice our opposition to the special use permit of 119 South Avenue. At this time, I'd like the people from our neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods who have come to oppose this request to please stand so you can see our opposition numbers. Tonight, we, Old Town Neighborhood, are asking you to vote no to the special use permit for 119 South Avenue. The reasons to deny are as follows. A, the effect of the proposed activity on traffic flow along adjoining streets. Traffic would be a hazard to non-attended cars as well as pedestrians and kids due to attendees either parking on South Avenue or waiting for vehicles to enter or exit the narrow 10-foot-wide one-way-in, one-way-out driveway. First instincts for any event attendee would be to automatically park on South Avenue for the ease of ability to leave the event. The narrow drive and blinded rear parking area would deter most attendees from driving into the backyard to begin with, leaving the majority of the attendees parking on South Avenue, which is only 24 feet wide, which causes concern for emergency vehicle access. B, the availability, number, and location of off-street parking. Even though there's been some talk of 33 cars permitted, does this include the Hawkins' vehicles, the caterers' vehicles, the music ensemble vehicles, the event planner vehicle, and handicap parking? Due to the large concrete pad from the garage apartment that was once there, a large tree and fire pit area, there's no obvious route for traffic to flow to this designated parking area. C, protective screening. A wood fence cannot screen noise or light from a commercial enterprise in a residential neighborhood. Not only are we referring to music, but car headlights and the beeping of car security systems upon arrival and departure. The headlights would disturb not only the neighbors along the back of the property in the Green Ives cul-de-sac, but neighbors on either side, as well as shining in the homes of those directly across the street and up and down the street when attendees are leaving the driveway. D, hours and manner of operation of the proposed use. The ordinance is too vague. There's no business plan. Downtown businesses are held accountable by specific ordinances put in place. This "special use" quote-unquote is too open-ended. There appears to be no mechanism in place to police these applicants for compliance, and we will be the ones left to live with the circumstances. E, outdoor lighting. The proposed low voltage lighting would be a hazard not only for event attendees trying to walk through the grass to their cars in the evenings, but to drivers as they try to navigate the narrow one-way driveway. F, ingress and egress to the property. Again, the 10-foot-wide one-way driveway is a safety hazard. There's no easy way to access the backyard parking. If an event attendee is leaving and additional attendee arrives late, one of the two cars will have to back out either into South Avenue or back into the backyard parking area, again with no visibility to the back parking area, an event attendee will more than likely park on South Avenue, thus leading to the possibility of blocked and destroyed sidewalks and the inaccessibility of emergency vehicles. G, compatibility with surrounding land use. The home at 119 South Avenue is compatible with surrounding land as a single-family residence. All the surrounding land is occupied by families. Even though for the moment, the homes across the street are zoned multi-use, and may I remind you that the zoning was not by their choice, but due to a cart-block zoning decision made by the city years ago. Again, even as multi-use, these homeowners have chosen to keep their homes as just that, homes, not businesses. After reviewing your packet, you were shown incidences where previous city council has set precedents and not allowed commercial enterprise to cross over into Old Town. For these specific reasons, we ask you to deny this request. And in addition to these specific items, we would also like you to take a minute to think. What other neighborhood in Cartersville do you know of that, that knows its boundaries? What other neighborhood has to work to protect its boundaries from commercial encroachment? What other neighborhoods you know that sticks together like Old Town does? We see no pluses to this request. We know the facts. The precedence has been set. The line was drawn in 1997 down to the center of Leek Street, around the entire Old Town Neighborhood. And for the last 14 years, we have had to constantly remind the city of Cartersville that even though we are not a traditional subdivision, we're a neighborhood. We are a historic district, we are tax-paying, voting citizens, and property owners in the city of Cartersville. We were the first neighborhood to be approached by the Historic Preservation Commission to become a historic district because we are a cohesive group that was already organized. And we have continued to stay that way in years since. That's why we're here. The precedence was set by previous councils. The line was drawn to keep commercial enterprise, and that's what this gathering place slash events facility really is. It's a business. From encroaching into Old Town Historic District, even though the application vehicle has been changed, the intent is the same. Again, we are asking to vote no to this special use permit request. Thank you.
It's a public hearing. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Just to address the one other point that is about traffic. The Hawkins have told me they've already contemplated, if necessary, they can put an egress drive on this side so that folks could come in and leave. I mean, that sort of leads to be seen whether that's a problem. I think, um, at least, just Tate brings that as a potential concern. So, that's easily accommodated with a separate drive from down this side. In terms of parking on the street, I guess, you know, we can't control what people do. I know the ordinance is requiring us to have ample parking, and we've got ample parking. And I, I think South Avenue, um, you know, it already, this is a picture from several weeks ago that my clients gave me from, uh, their driveway. Lots of folks already park on the street on South Avenue, and as you can see, plenty of room on that street for, uh, emergency vehicles and so on to get through. I mean, the city has not made it illegal to park on either side, so if someone chooses to park on the street, that's lawful. If the street can accommodate street parking, then the city council has the power to put no parking signs on it and cure that problem. But I would conclude that most people would come onto the property and park them, doesn't mean to park them for the event, rather than crawl up and down the street. So, I don't see that as a, as a concern. Thank you.
Ms. Olson, do you have a copy of that picture to give to our, if you can give it to our, just to our clerk, so she's got that as part of her record, since you showed that to us. It needs to be part of the record. Any other questions for Mr. Olson or anyone else? All right, once again, public hearing. Anybody wishing to step forward, may, step forward and do so at this time.
I just have.
Well, you gotta step up here and tell us your name and speak into the microphone. Simple rule.
I'm Linda Dillon. I'm a former neighbor of Old Town, and I was just wondering what the distance from the house to the property line is, and wouldn't that require another easement to build something on a driveway that close to the property line? We looked at it, and it, it didn't look accessible to us.
Randy? Are you ready?
Yeah, I don't know what that distance would be, but I would have to set that per driveway. The structure requires us that amount.
It's 65, something like that, feet on the inside.
So, you would have to, um, 30?
Yes.
63, 11 feet from the house to the property line.
Side property line.
I'm Susan Yarkid. I live at 539 Lane. I have a very good voice. I had laryngitis yesterday, but today, lovely, I can tell you that on a Saturday evening when we have the summer concerts, I can hear them on my front porch. I enjoy them. I don't think I would enjoy the, the noise from the events that are proposed for 119 South Avenue. In fact, uh, my bedtime is 9:00, and, uh, that I would be irritated. Just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you for your comments. Once again, this is a public hearing. You can step on up, state your name and your address, and you're free to talk.
I'm Joel Lynch, and I live at 114 South Avenue, and the biggest complaint that we would feel about this was the traffic in and out before and during the time of the wedding. That's my objection.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sir, may I sit down? I don't have good balance. You know, I just, I try to stand up.
Simmons. Jerry Simmons.
All right. If you'll step forward, you're in.
My name is Jerry Simmons, and I live at 40 Edelwood Drive, and I just wanted to ask the lady here, did I hear her correctly say that they had put, uh, information packets in everybody's mailboxes before now?
In Old Town. For you now, there have been no, yes, right?
Yes, I mean your, your territory, dude. Okay. 40 Edelwood Drive.
That would say to the mailbox outside.
I have not, I just want.
I'm here today. I'm never.
Well, if, and I'm, and I'm sorry, but I've gotta somehow maintain control of this. So, if you'll step forward and speak into the microphone, if you're gonna speak to each other, and that way we, we're helping, we're doing our clerk a great service by doing that, so, thank you.
My name is Lynn Pritchett. Sir. And.
Thank you. Sounds good.
I live at 217 South Porto Street, and to answer Mr. Simmons' question, uh, we did put a flyer on your mailbox, 'cause I walked up to your station and put it up there myself. So, it was on the front doors, not in the mailbox, 'cause we were looking at what was being posted. Porch. Um, the only other thing that I wanna say, I have a copy of a press release from October of last year about the importance of community planning by Richard Osborne. "Planners must carefully balance the needs and desires of residents against the challenges presented by growth and change, not just in the physical realm, but also economically and socially." Further down into the article, it says, "And Cartersville is one of the best communities in the state because it has good leadership and good planning, but it starts at the level of getting input from our residents and people who own property and businesses in the community." So, I just wanted to say, this is what's been said by the city, and I think you've heard some of our outcries. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, before you speak there, sir, we, you're eight and a half minutes for the one side. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Julian. I live at 49 Hyne Grove Road. Um, I'm the owner of the Sign Flippers here in Cartersville, and, uh, I'm just here to annual proposal towards your draft, the new sign ordinances that you're, uh...
Okay, we're, that's, that's not germane to this public hearing right now.
Yes, sir.
Give me an opportunity at the end of the meeting to give that to us. Okay? Thank you.
I didn't count that time.
Actually, I charged that to Peter Olson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Name's Anna Marquinez, 213 Clay Street. I work nights. When the festivities, festivities will be going on in this place, I will be sleeping. They're two yards away from my bedroom. I sleep from 2:00 to 9:00. I moved to Cartersville 'cause it's quiet. It's a very quiet neighborhood. I won't be able to get my sleep that I require to do my job. I'm 11 to 8 towards North Cross. And then I have another course of concern about consumption of alcohol. Who's gonna take care of our drunk? Pardon me. Who's gonna call a taxi for them? Are they gonna be able to leave the cars there? Who's gonna help there? And my game concern is my sleep, so I do little nights.
Thank you. All right, once again, public hearing continues. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. Okay? You got one minute.
Hi, I'm Jerry DeBarry, 1139 Lane in a circle. And their fence touches, kisses the back of my yard. And I love a wedding, and I love a reception, but not in my backyard. You know, that's all I have to say.
Okay? Going once.
I have the right to open and conclude.
Okay? And that being said, uh, we will close the, uh, public hearing in relation to SU 11-02. Council, you've had two public hearings. You've had about four weeks, I guess, of preparation, so now I lay it at your feet. Further discussion, motions, questions of staff, or the members here.
Well, Mayor, I know that, uh, you know, I've looked into this on both sides, and it's been a hard decision, and I know everybody else at the council has. Uh, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to deny the, uh, special use permit for 119 South Avenue.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have a second? This isn't a football game. If you please hold your applause. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. All right. Uh, I do know that several people were here for this specifically. It'll take about 60, it'll take a minute or two for y'all that have come specifically for this to, uh, to exit. If you'd like to stay, you're certainly welcome to do so.
Y'all come back now.
You have lived here too long. What would people in Indiana say if they heard you say that?
Y'all come back now, yeah.
I saw a great Andy Griffith movie a couple weeks ago. I bet you've seen it. Face the crowd. Oh, my gosh. He's, he's a guy.
Hello. Hello. William Seagull flying over the bomb, the bomb site. Hello.
Where he does it, he makes a permanent tree in order. Gets all those toilets, things, all the food.
Yeah.
I'm handling the PLO, the permanent tree in order. There he is.
All right, next item on the agenda is recognition of National Community Planning Month. For that, we'll call on esteemed author, Richard Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor. October has been designated National Community Planning Month by the American Planning Association as a way to highlight the role of planners and planning in our community. This year's theme, "New Ideas for America's Future," reflects on how planners help envision the future and address the needs of communities. Planning and Development Department Director Randy Manino and myself are both professionally certified planners through the American Institute of Certified Planners, part of the American Planning Association. Mr. Manino serves as a board member on the Georgia Association of Zoning Administrators, and I serve on the board of the Georgia Planning Association. However, no, no matter how much training or certification you can get, and no matter how many conferences you can go to, input... you can go to, input from members of the community is critical to any good planning process. We have a proclamation for Community Planning Month, and as you've directed me previously, Mayor, I'll be glad to speed read through this, or if you would like to.
I think you summarized it rather succinctly, or if you'd like to read through it, we're happy to listen to it. I'll leave that to your discretion.
I agree with you.
Add a sir to that, we're good.
But he didn't say sir.
All right, well, that being said, so eloquently by Richard, Chair, want to take a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We've got a time change for our December first council meeting, Mr. Grove.
Yeah, this is one of two times of the year where you change the meeting to a morning meeting, December first, so it does in conflict with the Christmas break, change to nine a.m. I recommend your approval of it.
Chair, want to take a motion?
Motion for approval of the change.
Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Our next item is Community Development Block Grant Award, Mr. Quist.
Thank you, sir, and counsel. Hopefully, you're all well aware that we were indeed awarded the 2011 Community Development Block Grant in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-two dollars. We applied for this earlier this spring and received notification a few weeks ago. We did actually just receive the formal statement of CDVG award. Just for a fresh memory, and for the benefit of those listening on the radio or watching on television, this grant was applied for for the purpose of owner-occupied housing rehabilitation in the North Town neighborhood. Again, that's one-ninety-nine, eight-oh-two. At this point, we are requesting, or we're recommending that you all formally accept this grant. You're also allowed to decline it if you prefer, but we do recommend that you accept this grant application or award.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this?
Tom, I've got a question, please. Is the city going, congratulations on the grant, is the city gonna go through North Town and identify homes, or is there a process where people who own their homes can get in touch with us, or how does that work?
At this point, during the application process, we were required to have pre-identified homes to include with our application. We surveyed the neighborhood, and based on census data relating to income levels and things like that, we kind of narrowed down the, at least the initial scope area of the project. We have already identified several potential participants in the project, and we will be giving them first dibs. Essentially, they'll have a window of time to where they're given an opportunity to participate. There is a small contribution that is gonna be required, the vast majority of the project will be subsidized by this grant. We have not come up with a plan yet in terms of how we would handle a situation where, say, not all those people decided to participate, or if all of them participated and we had money left over, but we will be sure to communicate that data, or that information, once it is known, if it becomes necessary. We'll publicize that, for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I don't know if it's a debate. You said that you started to go over the survey and determine if a house qualifies for this type of activity? There's a house on High Moon Street, it doesn't sit exactly on the road, but it's an ISO, it's right behind Coles, right there in the burb. And it's been vacant, well, just about everybody in that family dead, though.
Okay, it's behind where?
Coles.
Coles.
It's up across.
Okay, yeah.
In the back of Coles.
Yeah. That's not necessarily in the target area that we've identified, and they recommend to us that we really focus on a very tight area. And this particular project is a part of our overall ongoing efforts to help revitalize the North Town neighborhood. That was in something that the City Council has identified as a priority through adoption of the Urban Redevelopment Plan. So this grant, along with a previous grant of process of implementing building habitat homes, those are all taking place, generally speaking, in the North Town area. So, again, we basically, you know, started out with all of North Town, and then there were some requirements in terms of, I don't remember the exact figures, pardon me, but it's, you know, based off of census data and poverty statistics, that really helped to narrow down a focus area. If, once we address that area, if there is additional funding, we may, you know, expand that area a little bit, but I think it's pretty safe to say that we will do our best to remain in the North Town area. But I appreciate you pointing that out, and we can look and see what other options we have, certainly.
Thank you.
Tom, I always try to take every opportunity I can to give my gratitude for your hard work and for all of those that are helping you. It is making a difference, and I think we will see it for years to come, so I hope you extend that gratitude to all that are involved. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you very much, and it's definitely not me, there's a whole team of people working on this, and we certainly appreciate the council's leadership and, you know, willingness to go out for these grants and deal with some of the red tape that comes along with them, but I agree with you, I think in the end, it'll make a big difference, and it's just a good thing for our community, so, thank you.
Sir, I have a motion.
Thank you.
I move that we accept this grant as outlined.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, we've got a change order.
Mayor, council, the City of Cartersville Water Department currently has a contract with Jordan Jones and Golding for the engineering services for the design bidding construction services for the center road through Main Street Water Main Connector. In order to complete the design, additional environmental studies and permitting is required that was beyond the scope of the original contract. Jordan Jones and Golding has submitted a proposal in an amount not to exceed eight-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. I would like to comment that that is a not-to-exceed amount, we are anticipating that it will cost less than the full eight-thousand-eight-hundred-dollar amount. We consider this price to be reasonable, it will bring the total logistic contract amount to an amount not to exceed one-hundred-eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. The cost is to be paid for from surplus funds, I recommend approval of this contract change.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to accept this contract change.
Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Continue on, sir.
The next item is a continuation of the item that was previously brought before the council. We have several chemicals that are used in the water treatment plant and water pollution control plant that we get quotes for on an annual basis. At times, the purchase of these chemicals exceeds five thousand dollars, so that's what we're asking for, is council approval for purchases exceeding five thousand dollars. The three companies listed here, we did not have the E-Verify Safe documents in, and we brought this to council before, so we would like these three companies added to that list. This will eliminate the number of items brought before council.
Which benefits us, or you?
I think both of us.
And the vendors that we're putting on there, they're specific to the chemicals?
Right, and I will point out, on all of these chemicals, we get at least three prices from different vendors, and we select the lowest price, and then during the course of the year, we need to rebid this, and for whatever reason, they can't honor that annual contract amount, we'll bring that before council.
Mayor, a question. Ed, I don't know about these chemicals, do they have a shelf life, and do we, the more we can buy at one time, the better deal we can get, the better price?
We're locked in a lot of times based on the volume of the storage container at whatever plant. Some of these come in cylinders, so, you know, we're pretty much set on the qualities that we have.
They won't get stale, that's what she asked.
Shelf life, yeah, okay.
Okay?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Ed. These next couple items, I'm happy to see brought before us, Mr. Porter?
Yes, Mayor, so am I. I've been with him for a number of years, even prior, this is the city manager who worked on this project from Main Street Gateway, it's a 2003 SLOSS-funded project, I've received bids from six different contractors, the lowest and best bid, C.W. Matthews, is two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine and nine cents. Part of this funding is from Georgia Department of Transportation, we'll receive five-hundred-thousand dollars for the road construction portion of that, and there's some landscaping funds that we receive, up to four-hundred thousand, based on the C.W. Matthews bid. Currently, unless things change as they progress along on the project, it's two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, four-fourteen, fifteen cents, that'll be reimbursed with the state on the landscaping portion of that. If the estimates based on what they submitted come in, the total cost to the city will only be one-million-three-hundred-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. A couple pictures out there, just kind of point out mainly on the Main Street Gateway, obviously, this is a beautification project, there'll be a divided median put up, the utilities will be underground, there will be some, the light holes will stay, but this is westbound, basically to Cartersville, and the electric utility will be going underground, and then the next slide kind of shows a couple different scenarios. Essentially, the first slide showed about BP Station coming up, seventy-five is where it's about gonna start, you know, and approximately at the Starbucks is basically where the divided median will end at. And like I said, the main portion of this is going to be underground utilities, there's gonna be a sidewalk along there, down the ports to get to seventy-five, it's gonna have, basically, like I said, a beautification project into the city. Recommend approval of the contractor bids.
I make a motion to approve the recommended bid from C.W. Matthews.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, continue on, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to offer congratulations to you, the city manager, I mean, a lot of people have worked hard on this, and thank you, thank you. This is gonna make a big, Dan, thank you, this is gonna make a big difference to our city, and on behalf of all of us, we appreciate it.
Continue on with this, part of this job is higher construction administration inspector services, and we received a bid from Corning Engineering, who actually did draw up the plans, and recommend using that firm for this, and not to exceed figure of one-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-six-hundred. Tommy Sanders and myself will be working with this firm, and we'll be making sure we're trying to keep the hours down to a minimum, we do expect it to come in less than this, but it'll just be a matter of how long the project extends out, if there are any rain delays or anything that would extend the time, except there'll be a not-to-exceed amount, and that is also funded by the 2003 SLOSS.
Any questions, comments? If not, Chair, want to take a motion?
Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Any opposed, like, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Elliott's got the next three, I believe.
Thank you, sir. Last big ring we have, we got a complaint from a business at eleven-thirty North Tennessee Street, where Tennessee Street's stormwater was coming into two driveways, threatening to flood the building up there, and our city engineer looked at it and solicited price quote from Barco Paving, a local paving company, to come in and overlay the two driveway entrances to keep this Tennessee Street stormwater in Tennessee Street to the nearest catch basin. We'd like to recommend approval of the five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and six cents price quote. E-Verify Safe documents are on file, regular budget funds will pay for this.
Okay, any discussion on this item? If not, Chair, want to take a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
The next item, Certification Acceptance Qualification Agreement, is an agreement between Georgia DOT and the City of Cartersville that they highly recommend for us to get executed to become a qualified local public agency, LPA, to manage the core activities for federal aid-funded projects, like Dethan Ferry Road. What it does is it cuts down a lot of red tape, GDOT, to know who they're working with and who the designated folks are here with the city to execute agreements and documents. This agreement is the first step in getting authorized, the agreement basically advises GDOT on who they need to deal with on various issues. City engineer has been designated, where they request a registered engineer, and the mayor is also designated on all the official documents.
All right, any questions on this item? If not, Chair, want to take a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Last but not least, we have an LME grant from Georgia DOT, and LME is Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, they've renamed the LARP program, the local area road program. This grant is for one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents to help pay for leveling, resurfacing, and striping of Carroll Drive, Don Drive, and Quality Drive. This amount won't pay for the whole amount, but we have surplus funds or budgeted funds for paving in our current budget. We recommend approval of the grant.
I do have one question on this one. Are there a list of roads that you have that you hope to get this done, or is this, did it just come up arbitrarily?
What we do is our city engineer rates, R-A-T-E-S, all local streets in our city, and the ones that are worst, he ranks them priority by worst to best, and these three, we just did a bunch of leveling and grinding out on all of these, and they're in pretty rough shape.
Any other discussion? Any motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, sir.
One more thing, Mayor, while I'm here, quickly. By the end of May tomorrow, our railroad cleaning projects will be complete, except for setting three concrete lids on some boxes that we put in. I will have the final dollar amounts that we've expended available at the next meeting.
Thank you, thanks for the hard work on that. Mr. Archer, you have the next item?
Back in the 1980s, the city did some business with a company called Carolina Transformer in North Carolina. Carolina Transformer was in the business of repairing transformers and disposing of transformers that could not be repaired. Apparently, some of the transformers that they disposed of had PCBs in the transformers, and the site where Carolina Transformer was located was contaminated. EPD, EPA came in, declared a contaminated superfund site, had to spend ten million dollars to clean it up, and now they're coming after every city, many of which are in Georgia, most of which are in North Carolina that did business with Carolina Transformer. We have joined with several other Georgia and North Carolina cities and negotiated a settlement of the claim that they intended to file in federal court in North Carolina. And so I would recommend that we accept a settlement proposal of the sum of twenty-thousand dollars to get rid of this claim. I believe it will save the city a lot of money instead of going to North Carolina to try this case in federal court, although it would be very beneficial if y'all would hire me to do that. But I think it's best that you approve this settlement and not pay me the twenty-thousand dollars, but to pay it to settle the case. There will be a settlement agreement that had been negotiated will be finalized on Monday, and I would ask that you approve the settlement of twenty-thousand dollars to get rid of the claim, and give the mayor and the city attorney's office the leeway to approve the final wording in the settlement agreement so it can be signed on Monday.
And that's a hard twenty, we don't need to put in some leeway there if something changes?
Twenty thousand.
Done, Dan. Okay. There you go.
They started out with a hundred and something.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We have an addendum to the intergovernmental SPOSS agreement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's an agreement that all the cities and the counties approve relative to the SPOSS that will be voted on this fall, voted in November. The change in the wording is relative to radios and the 800 megahertz radio system, they want to reword that, so it says 700 or 800 megahertz for other citywide interoperable radio or communication system. That's just relative to any technology that may change and give the latitude there to look at something else. The agreement needs to be approved so that the election can go forward and I recommend that you approve this identity agreement.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We have one item to add to the agenda. Motion to add that item.
Motion to add.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item is added. Chief.
Mayor, counsel, welcome. Your department needs to replace some computers, specifically desktop computers, some of the ones we have seven to 10 years old and need replaced. These computers will be ordered through the IT department of the city so they'll be contiguous with all the other computers that the city uses, installed by our IT manager. They will be paid for through asset forfeiture funds and we're asking that you approve that amount of $8,199.36.
Okay. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, again, by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, may I ask the chief a question about, chief, may I ask you a question about the previous vote we just had, intergovernmental public safety communication system? In 9/11, there was a lot of talk about, in many counties and cities, that the county system couldn't talk to the city system. Are all of our folks working together on this to make sure?
That's the intent.
That's the intent.
Yeah, the 700, 800 megahertz, the big issue and, still the chief's thunder, I guess, a big issue in public safety is interoperability and that's the ability for all jurisdictions to be able to talk to each other and that's what this is driving at.
And this is fire and police, Sam?
Yes, ma'am.
Public sector actually will tie us in better with other communities or other counties in the event that some disaster crosses those lines, correct?
Correct. And that's what has to be ironed out, which is the best system that will give us the greatest interoperability.
So, this ability that we just did today to make it easy for you all to adjust?
It gives some flexibility to it.
Gives some flexibility, okay.
And I would hope that both of you would keep a real eye on what we're selecting as a system.
Yes, that would be.
Very, very much.
That's what I want to say, too. Thank you.
All right. Opportunity for public comments. If I have business to like to bring before council, may I step forward and do so at this time?
Again, I am the mayor and councilman members. My name is Julia Falkenstein. I'm the owner of the sign flippers here in Carthage Hill. I've been told that I'm not allowed to flip my sign no more because of the city ordinance stating that twirling curb type portable sign, display signs are prohibited. I have a proposal towards a draft that y'all have written for making a new sign ordinance and in the proposal, it still states that such signs shall be held worn or balanced at all times, such signs shall not twirl or rotate. And so, I have a proposed for that draft. If I may pass that out.
Yeah, if you can, just make sure that our clerk gets one.
Make sure he's got one, too.
And make sure Mr. Manino does as well.
I accept.
All right. Is it?
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Couple of other items. Michael Hill, welcome back.
Michael, stand up. Wow. You back riding that bike yet?
Haven't been on it, Sam. Just feel a foot away right now.
All right. And Sam, you've got one last item you want to.
Sure. I've got an item. There was a box in my office when I came to the meeting and it's from Electric Cities of North Carolina, David. They sent us a plaque for your guys and I've got a box of hats and some stuff in there for you. Just a way of saying thanks. They had 150,000 customers without power and they're all back in a few days and that's a small token. They're appreciative for it.
The good guys. Thank you, David.
Any other business that needs to come before council? Seems like I have something.
What's your move on that?
Yeah, Greg's in here. Moonlight hike is the 11th. I think it's the 12th. There you go.
I should be hiking now.
I guess, you know, on that vein, I guess I've got to get it into the record that my wife and I just celebrated our 20th wedding anniversary yesterday.
Congratulations.
Twenty years in a day and she still hasn't wised up. If there's any, no other business, I'll have a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.
That's a adjourn.